Good evening. I would like to call to order the November 3, 2017, Belbrick City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes of October 23, 2017. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None.
None here.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements this evening. We would like to recognize some of our employees this evening. I'm going to get up and recognize each of their anniversaries. So we typically will recognize the 10, 15, 20, and 25 anniversaries. It's very important that these gentlemen and ladies have been here and have been loyal, hard-working city of Belbrick employees, and we want to show our appreciation. So with that, I will come up here and I'll read a short little blurb about each employee and how many years they've been here. And it looks very well-written, so thank you whoever put this together. Could be fun. First, we're going to start with Officer Mark Burns. Mr. Burns. Mark's been here 10 years. Mark Burns was hired as a part-time police officer in 2007 and was promoted as a full-time officer in 2011. Mark enjoys his job and brings some fun to his position. He does what is asked of him and is mindful of doing a good job. Mark brings needed joy to our job and very much enjoys the camaraderie, can't talk like camaraderie.
Camaraderie.
Thank you, Mike, of working with his fellow officers. Mark is an avid Notre Dame football fan, which I knew, and enjoys traveling to South Bend on occasion to see them play. The police department leaders enjoy Mark's lighthearted spirit. 10 years. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Next, 15 years. Mr. Sergeant Brian Mead. Mr. Mead? Sergeant Mead, Brian Mead, has worked for the city since 2002 and was promoted to the police sergeant in 2014. Brian has a true love of country and service. Brian takes his responsibilities as a leader very seriously and is always looking for ways to improve himself and the police department. Brian is an avid baseball and Star Wars fan. Did not know that. Brian fancies himself as a crooner and often regales us with impromptu songs which you didn't break out. Roll call. That was a mouthful. Good thing I read it in advance. Sergeant, thank you very much. There are 15 years Next, 15 years of service. Mrs. Cindy Porter. Cindy Porter. Cindy Porter began working for the city of Belbrick as a dispatcher in 2002. In 2007, she was promoted to administrative assistant and dispatch supervisor. Cindy continues to provide administrative support for the police department. Cindy is a very hard worker and takes her role as a representative of the Belbrick Police Department very seriously. Cindy is a wealth of knowledge and is responsible for many tasks that keep our organization running smoothly. Cindy is always ready to assist officers and share needed information to help keep them safe and the performance of their job. Thank you for your time. Better get drunk water. Next, Mr. Officer Tony Ruble. 15 years of service. Mr. Ruble? Tony Ruble was hired as a part-time police officer in 2002. Tony is our community policing czar. He knows most people in Belbrick, which is completely true, and has an absolute love of serving his community. Tony can be counted on to offer assistance to anyone that needs his help, day or night. Tony is loyal, great asset for the Belbrick Police Department. Thank you for your time. Louis. Louis Schatzberg has been our cameraman for, and here for 15 years. And we're just doing budgets tonight, so I know how much he makes, and it's not very Louis Schatzberg. In 2002, Louis started working for the city as a camera and operator. Since then, Louis has faithfully attended almost every city council meeting to operate the cameras. Louis is also native in the Belbrick community and volunteers this time in a number of ways, including the City Volunteers Program and Volunteer Belbrick, and also driving for the, or sure, mayor. Louis, thank you very much for your service. Moving up in years category, Detective Tony Vedder. Mr. Vedder? Tony Vedder. Tony Vedder has worked for the city in several different capacities. Tony was hired as a part-time dispatcher in 1997, moved to a full-time dispatcher, and eventually became a police officer in 2001. Currently, Tony works as a police officer and detective. Tony has taken this job as our detective with great pride and possesses a confidence that serves him well in his role. Tony has developed good writing, good working relationships with other investigators throughout the area, as well as with our local prosecutors. Tony is a huge fan of the Dallas Cowboys and metal rock and roll. Next, Lieutenant, Mr. Steve Carmen. Steve Carmen began his service for Belbrick Police Department as a volunteer officer in 1992. He's eventually became a full-time officer in 1997 and a sergeant in 1999. In 2014, Steve was promoted to lieutenant. Lieutenant Carmen has flourished in his role as a police patrol lieutenant. His leadership abilities have soared in the past several years and can be depended upon to assist with critical decision-making. He can be counted on to assist with serious tasks and have improved the police department. He continues to offer his leadership as he assists officers on calls and assists the chief on police with day-to-day operational duties. Lieutenant Carmen is a big fan of technology, a movie buff, enjoys golfing. Kathy Emmerich is not here this evening, but I will go ahead and read her a little bio. In 1992, Kathy Emmerich was hired as a utility clerk and continues in this role. Since Kathy started position, the way in which we process utility bills and track customers' information has dramatically drastically changed. Kathy provides wonderful customer service for our customers and residents. She's also a big Ohio State Buckeyes fan and never misses a game. That's impressive. Next, Mr. Athena Haas. 25 years. Athena Haas was hired as a volunteer firefighter in 1992. In 1998, she was promoted to volunteer lieutenant. Then in 2000, she transitioned to work as a full-time firefighter. In 2004, she was promoted again to lieutenant and then moved up to her current rate of captain in 2012. Captain Haas remains passionate about the Belbrick community. She is responsible for overseeing the EMS service and its many facets. Captain Haas manages the department's EMS billing, patient report reviews, EMS equipment and supplies. She also serves as the region as a search and rescue canine handler. Last, most certainly not least, my near-next-door neighbor, about eight houses down, Mr. Greg Narker. Greg was hired as a volunteer firefighter?
A few years ago.
Greg was hired as a volunteer firefighter in 1992 and then transitioned to full-time firefighter in 1995. In 2004, he was promoted to lieutenant and served as a shift supervisor. Lieutenant Narker continues to serve the community through his commitment to fire prevention, overseeing Belbrick TV, and serving as the department's fire marshal. It's really great to see all of you come out and support your fellow employees, and it's also nice to see that we have a lot of long-term employees in Belbrick. So what that really means is we really don't have a high turnover, and we hope that all our employees enjoy working for the city because we definitely enjoy having you guys work for us, and girls. So thank you all for coming. Moving on. That is all we have for mayor's announcements, and please feel free if you want to get up and leave. That is perfectly okay. I know some of us are actually still probably working. Moving on. We do have public hearings and ordinance this evening. We'll start with ordinance number 17-9. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrick Ordinance Number 2017-9, an ordinance amending Chapter 1224 subdivision regulations of the Belbrick Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Belbrick has enacted Chapter 1224 of the Belbrick Municipal Code, which is entitled "Subdivision Regulations," and whereas the purpose of Chapter 1224 is to protect the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Belbrick, and whereas the city desires to amend Chapter 1224 of the Belbrick Municipal Code to increase the amount of the cash bonds provided by subdivisions for plan review and inspection costs. Now therefore, the city of Belbrick hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendments to Chapter 1224 subdivision regulations of the Belbrick Municipal Code be approved with additions shown by italics and underlined and deletions shown by strike-throughs and brackets. Section 1224.01, fees. The following fees are required under the subdivision regulations for the plating of land in the city. A preliminary filing fee, $200 plus $25 per acre. B final filing fee, $250 plus $25 per acre. C lot split, split lot combination fee, $50. D inspection fees. Prior to approval by the planning board of a final plat and construction plans, the subdivision shall provide a cash bond in the amount of 6% of the estimated cost of the public improvements, streets, curbs, sidewalks, storm sewers, and waterlines to the finance office. The subdivision's engineer of record shall provide an estimate as to quantities and prices, and if a discrepancy exists between the subdivision and the city engineer's estimates, the inspection deposit will be based on the city engineer's estimate. E inspection costs. Inspection costs and the cost of subdivision plan review performed under contract by the city shall be charged against a 6% deposit that's changed from 4%. Any portion of the deposit shall not used shall be returned to the developer at the time the performance bond or letter of credit is released. However, if funds deposited at the time of filing are not sufficient to cover all inspection costs, additional inspection fees shall be required when needed at the discretion of the city manager. F water and storage connection fees. All fees for connection to the city water system shall be established in Chapter 1242 of this code. All fees for connection to the county sanitary sewer system shall be set by the Green County Department of Sanitary Engineering and paid to that agency. G failure to pay filing fee. If a filing fee is not paid prior to the initiation of construction, a penalty of 50% of the filing fee shall be added to the fees listed in this section if the project is in full compliance with the zoning code. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this amendment before you is to increase the amount of cash bond required for development within the city. So when a new development either comes in the city or if it's in the township, but it's on the city's water system, in the past, we've historically required 4% of the total cost of construction to be placed with us, and we use that for plan review fees and inspections. So when they're installing the water main, we'll go out and look at that. The last several developments, the 4% has not been sufficient, so we want to increase it to 6%. We only charge them what is actually used. So if they are efficient and their construction crews are efficient, they will actually get money returned. We don't keep the money in excess of what is used, but at times, we've had to go and bill them for additional services. So by increasing to 6%, I've looked at it historically, and that should give us a better coverage for the actual inspection fees that are being used by the city. So that is the only change to the fees here, is increasing the inspection fees from 4% to 6%.
Any questions on city council? This is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience would have any questions about this ordinance, I know we talked about this last meeting too, this isn't an increase in what they're going to eventually pay. It's a increase in what they would pay upfront, and then we would essentially refund.
Yes.
If they didn't use.
Still end up paying the same amount. It's just we get the money upfront.
Less paperwork.
Yes.
Seeing no one's getting up, I call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-9?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 2017-9.
May I have a second?
Second.
End roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Mittelstetter to adopt ordinance number 2017-9, an ordinance amending Chapter 1224 subdivision regulations of the Belbrick Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one more public hearing of ordinance this evening. Ordinance number 2017-10. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2017-10, an ordinance amending Article 19, enforcement and penalties of the Belbrick Zoning Code. Whereas the city of Belbrick has enacted the Belbrick Zoning Code, and whereas the purpose of the zoning code is to protect the peace, health, safety, and welfare of our citizens of Belbrick, and whereas the city desires to amend Article 19, enforcement and penalties of the Belbrick Zoning Code to allow for the assessment of civil penalties for violations of the zoning code, and whereas the Belbrick Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning code on October 17, 2017, and whereas the Belbrick Planning Board unanimously approved the amendment and recommended adoption by city council, and whereas all amendments to zoning code must be approved by ordinance. Now therefore, the city of Belbrick hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendment to Article 19, enforcement and penalties of the Belbrick Zoning Code be approved with additions shown by italics and underlined and a deletion shown by strike-throughs and brackets. Article 19, enforcement and penalties. Section 19.12, penalties. Section 1, violation of any provision of this ordinance or any amendment or supplement thereto, or failure to comply with any of the requirements of this code may be enforced either through filing of misdemeanor complaint or assessment of civil penalty or both. Section A, minor misdemeanor, except as otherwise provided herein, any person, firm, or corporation violating any of the provisions of this code or any amendment or supplement thereto shall upon conviction of a minor misdemeanor be fined not more than $100. B, civil penalties. A person who violates any provision set forth in provision of this zoning code has committed a civil offense and is subject to civil penalties. Prior to assessment of a civil penalty, the zoning inspector shall issue a written notice of the civil violation to the offending person, and the notice shall include, 1, the street address of the property subject to the notice of violation, 2, a description of the violation and the sections of the ordinance violated, 3, corrective action that will eliminate or correct the violations, 4, the reasonable amount of timeframe required to correct the violation, 5, provide information to the property owner of the right to a hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals if a request for a hearing is made within 20 days of receiving the notice, 6, when applicable, include a statement of the right to file a lien. Section 2, the written notice of this violation shall be served by one of the following methods: A, delivered personally; B, sent by certified mail to the last known address and receiving a return receipt showing delivery of the mailing; or C, if the notice is returned showing that the letter was unclaimed, serviced by regular mail; D, if the notice is returned showing that the letter was not delivered for the reason other than unclaimed, a copy of the note shall be posted in a conspicuous place in or about the structure affected by such a notice. Section 3, a person is served with a notice of civil violation and requests a hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals to contest the commission of a violation, to offer explanation of the circumstances, or to offer proof of correction. The request shall be made in writing and received by the city within 20 days of the person's receipt of the notice of violation. The hearing shall be conducted in accordance with provisions of Article 20 of the zoning code. If the person desires the presence at the hearing of the zoning inspector, the person must request the same in their written response to the notice of civil violation. If the person fails to remedy the zoning violation within a reasonable time, if the person admits that they're offense by written response, or if the person fails to attend a requested hearing, the zoning inspector may pursue enforcement as set forth in this section. If the person denies the offense by written response, the person must also request a hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accordance with Section 19.15 of the zoning code, when a notice of civil violation has been issued pursuant to section of the following, the following amounts are hereby assessed upon the violator. A, any violation of the zoning code that is a first offense shall be $25 per day per offense or $250 per offense total. B, any violation of the zoning code that is a second offense shall be $50 per day per offense or $500 per offense total. C, any violation of the zoning code that is a third offense shall be $75 per day per offense or $750 per offense total. Section 4, those who erect signs contrary to the provision of this code shall be fined upon conviction or assessed by civil penalty not more than $10 per offense up to a maximum of four offenses in a 12-month period. Illegal signs are subject to confiscation by the city and will not be returned to the owners until all penalties are satisfied. Unclaimed signs shall be held for 30 days and then disposed of as surplus property. Convictions or civil penalties for sign violations in excess of four offenses in a 12-month period shall be fined upon conviction or assessing civil penalty of an amount not to exceed $25 per offense. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this ordinance amends the zoning code to allow, in a nutshell, the enforcement of violations through using civil penalties. Previously, the only method to penalize somebody who violated the zoning code was through criminal prosecution. Criminal prosecution is still a remedy available under this code, but now we can also assess a civil penalty. In certain cases, criminal prosecution is not really the best answer. So if there's a violation for somebody who's not parking on a hard surface, this is a way that we can assess a civil penalty. We can ultimately, if that civil penalty is not paid, we can put a lien on the property. But it just gives us another enforcement mechanism to gain compliance with the zoning code. That's ultimately what we're looking for, is compliance with the zoning code, and this gives us another way to obtain that.
Questions on council? I like the fact that you don't have to issue a court order or a summons or arrest warrant, and we can still, especially when you're dealing with a corporation.
Right.
AKA, bank.
Bank on a foreclosed property.
Foreclosed property, yes. This is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience, if you have any questions or input, this would be the time to do that. Seeing no one coming forward, I move this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-10?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-10.
May I have a second?
I'll say it.
End roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt ordinance number 2017-10, an ordinance amending Article 19, enforcement and penalties of the Belbrick Zoning Code, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one introduction of ordinance this evening. Ordinance number 2017-11. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Ordinance number 2017-11, an ordinance amending Chapter 1454, registration of abandoned properties of the Belbrick Municipal Code. Whereas the city of Belbrick has enacted Chapter 1454 of the Belbrick Municipal Code, which is entitled "Registration of Abandoned Properties," and whereas the purpose of Chapter 1454 is to protect the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Belbrick, whereas the city desires to amend Chapter 1454 of the Belbrick Municipal Code to allow for the assessment of civil penalties for violations. Now therefore, the city of Belbrick hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendments to Chapter 1454, registration of abandoned properties of the Belbrick Municipal Code be approved with additions shown by italics and underlined and deletion shown by strike-through and brackets. Section 1454.08, violations and penalties. Whoever, Section A, whoever violates any provision of this code has committed a civil offense and is subject to civil penalties. Section B, when a civil offense has occurred, the following amounts are hereby assessed upon the violator. Section 1, a first offense shall be $25 per day per offense or $250 per offense total. 2, a second offense shall be $50 per day per offense or $500 per offense total. 3, a third offense shall be $75 per day per offense or $750 per offense total. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. And this lowers the amount, right?
It does, but it also makes it, again, a civil offense as opposed to a criminal offense. So this section of code was relatively recently adopted. It was probably in the height of the recession when we had a increase in the number of abandoned properties, and this legislation allowed us to make whoever owned that property register. So if there was a property maintenance issue, if there was a mowing issue, we knew who to go to. A lot of these cases, it was a bank-owned property. And at the time, and I recall, I think it was Councilman Martin at the time, when we did this penalty, the old penalty section, it seemed a little disjointed from what our other penalties were. So I had a note to go back and look at that, and now that we've made all these other civil penalty adjustments, that really fits this even more so than most of them, because most of these abandoned properties are bank-owned or property management company-owned. Somebody has taken their abandoned, so there's not a resident there, and you can't really criminally prosecute a corporation, as the mayor said on the last ordinance. So what this allows, again, is a civil penalty. We do have some compliance with, some of the bigger companies will comply with this property registration, and most of the time, especially now, there's not nearly as many as there were. But going forward, if that ever occurs again and we need to enforce this, we will be able to pursue it to get that information that we need for that property to be maintained properly.
Does anyone have any questions for our city manager before we introduce this ordinance?
Abandoned properties, that include properties where maybe nobody lives there? I mean, what's the definition?
That definition is in the rest of the code, and I would have to look at the specifics. But yeah, that's what it is intended. If somebody is no longer living there and it has been abandoned, and there are issues at that property, we need, this was a mechanism for us to find out who we needed to go to to get those problems fixed.
Okay.
Now, at times, there's, it doesn't mean foreclosed properties, because there are foreclosed properties that people are living in, that, you know, they may continue to live in while it's being foreclosed. But this is truly something that's been abandoned, and we don't know who to go to to get that, get the issues fixed.
So it's not considered abandoned basically until you can't find somebody?
Pretty much. And that's when, that's when we're looking to, for whoever that is, somebody ultimately has title to that property. We want them to register with us so that we can, we know who that is and how to contact either the bank or the property management company that they've hired to maintain that property, and if there is an issue, we know who to reach out to.
Okay.
Any other questions for our city manager? Seeing none, I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2017-11.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 2017-1.
May I have a second?
I'll say it.
End roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to introduce ordinance number 2017-11, an ordinance amending Chapter 1454, registration of abandoned properties of the Belbrick Municipal Code, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
the mounting screws will be. So they're not, they're not going to impact the design of the Purple Heart or anything like that. So if you have a preference.
Okay, these are usually one of the most difficult decisions this group has.
I like the top one.
So let's just go ahead and start.
I like the top one, mayor.
You like the top, okay.
I like the top one.
Top one, mayor.
Top one. Top one works for me.
Top one also.
Well, guess I'm in the minority there. I thought you could read the bottom one better.
I was struggling with that, too.
We're going with the top one.
It carries over the logo, the font.
I like the font, I just, you know, with my bad eyes, I thought I'd have a little time seeing it, but I think it definitely looks more fancy in honor of a Purple Heart.
Can you flip it back a page, Mark, so we can look at the font on the, that was my thought.
Look at the top.
Yeah, it sort of matches Bel Brook.
That was the intent, that's what they did, is they took that and matched it, you know, they have the script on the, on the first letter there, and then that, so.
Is that approval enough for your?
That is more than I thought.
That's most whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Another topic that I wanted to mention was medical marijuana. So if you've been reading the news, they awarded the sites for the cultivation sites, of course, none of those were in or around Bel Brook. But the next phase is the dispensaries, and there's a certain number of dispensaries throughout the state. And I have a map here just to show you. So Greene County is in with Madison and Fayette County, and if you look, there's only one dispensary in those three counties. So right now, we have no legislation that would mean that they couldn't come here. I don't believe that it's going to be a problem, because if there's one dispensary in here, 675 obviously cuts through as you go this way, you've got 70 going across that way, I'm sure I-71 cuts through Fayette. I can't imagine that Bel Brook is going to be a primary location. But we have been getting calls from, I think, people from, generally from out of state, they're just finding cities that, if they have restrictions or not. And we've told them we do not have restrictions. So if you would like me to pursue some restrictions, we can do that, or we can just, it's a legal dispensary, the state has passed the law, they can operate legally. So they will be the ones controlling that. But we do have the ability, if we want to not allow them, we can pass some legislation.
How many cities around us already have that legislation passed?
In that, I have not looked in the counties that affect us. In Montgomery County, several of them, at least, initially, a lot of them put moratorium on, and then some of them have gone and passed the legislation to ban it. But I know, I don't believe the City of Fairborn has any legislation, Yellow Springs, I'm sure, does not have any legislation banning, I don't know about Xenia and Beaver Creek.
Beaver Creek was just putting up something.
I think they at least did a moratorium. I don't know if they ever put that into actual language, at least it held them tight, and they may be waiting to do that, but.
I know there's one, at least one place that has been designated as a grow place.
Right.
In Greene County.
Yeah, those would have to be approved by the city, as my app.
Well, you can also, yeah, you had to apply, and they've already named the potential sites, and so there's none of those that, I don't think there'd be any place that you could physically place it in the city anyway. So this is really just the potential that if somebody wanted to open a dispensary, right now, there is, there's probably some zoning restrictions based on our zoning code, but there's not an overall restriction on medical marijuana. And the law that was passed by the state allows for cities, in most cases, you can't do, you can't ban adult entertainment completely from your city. In this case, you can ban it if you so choose.
And I'm sure it has certain things about schools and all those other things.
Right, right.
So in theory, if we looked at it, there probably isn't anywhere within
Right.
the radius nor, so it's unlikely. But Nick, thoughts?
I think maybe we should look at an ordinance or change. I don't know whether or not I would support it or not, but I think it pays to at least look at it.
Forrest?
At this point, I think we're fine. The zoning code does cover businesses and things.
Yeah, and I don't know enough about the actual law to know how it literally, if someone could put it here or not. Obviously, I wouldn't want to pass legislation just to pass it, but.
Right.
I don't know if there'd be a downside to that. I mean, it's just like any other retail store, I mean, you go in and buy the product and leave, so you've got issues of parking and.
I don't know, I would suspect the police chief would have a different viewpoint of that, but I don't know.
It's a controlled substance, it's no different than liquor. The state has authorized it, you can sell it. So it's, and it's not in, I know, it's not for sale in the form that you can smoke it, that's not one of the options. It's all in either edible or something, that's what it is. So that's the only things available, so I.
And the other thing, too, you know, even if you don't want it here, it's going to come here anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, that's always.
I think we should look at potentially some consideration of legislation for that, or at least see, see what others similarly does, are doing.
And what house, right?
Yeah, and I'm with, Mr. Edwards, right at this point, that I'm not ready to support it or, you know, not, but I think we should look at it.
I think we need to look at it further. It is a, it's a prescription-type thing, right?
Well, it's not a prescription, because it can't be called a prescription, but it is, it has to be by, it has to be granted by a doctor, but it's, it's, yes, it is the same as a prescription, but it's not called a prescription because of what it is.
Yeah, I think it warrants looking at, but it is a legal substance, and I think we'd have to tread carefully.
I would agree with what everybody has already said. I'm not for it or against it. I really don't think we want to be known for that. And since we don't have an income tax, I wonder if maybe we'd be targeted, and maybe somebody would decide to choose Bel Brook over other cities.
That's a good point.
To put their operations down. I think we ought to look at it.
I think it'd be worthwhile to look at our zoning code right now to see if it's even going to be permissible with the schools and the churches, and I'm not sure what language is out there, but at least investigate it from that standpoint. Then I think it'd be worthwhile to explore maybe a moratorium. I'm not overly concerned about having a facility or dispensary in the city, but I don't want to be
The first.
the only city remaining in this region that hasn't already outlawed it, now they're going to come to us by default.
Yeah, and I know there are cities that are actively actually pursuing these, too. I mean, so not everyone has done it. I know there are cities that are actively pursuing it. I don't, I understand the concern, I don't know that we'd be the last one standing without an ordinance, so they're going to have to.
I don't think so, but I'm just thinking of a moratorium, just kind of wait and see how that rolls and see how it comes out. I, you know, I would think if I was going to do a dispensary, I would probably choose someplace or some city that's more accessible than Bel Brook so much, and I think it'd be Beaver Creek, or I'd go further in the county, closer to the county lines, and maybe a central-type location, but.
Yep.
So I think, I think we need to look, just so, I guess, I'd like a little more about it, some of the current regulations, how people, is there, is there a reason that they can't be here anyway? So.
Okay.
Okay, is that good enough?
Yeah, I will, I will work on that, and come back to you at a future point. Next item, small cell facilities. Earlier this year, council authorized to participate in a lawsuit. There was legislation that was passed, actually, as part of, around the same time as the budget bill was passed, to allow small cell facilities, which are the next wave of cell towers, but they're a micro wireless-type facility, they could put them anywhere in the public right away. And there was no zoning code that you could, you could do to control the placement, or the quantity, or anything like that. It was pretty much carte blanche for the telecommunication providers to come in. So we joined a group of about 50 cities in central and southwest Ohio that challenged that. We got a favorable ruling in Franklin County that it violated the single-subject statute because it was also in the same bill that had regulations on pet stores. So there was a positive ruling. There are multiple of these lawsuits around the state. There was one in Cleveland that was contrary, that actually ruled that they didn't violate that, but since then, there's been one, I believe, in the Cincinnati area that agreed that they violated. So what's going on right now is there's some negotiations going on between the Ohio Municipal League and the telecommunication providers, and some legislators to develop a bill that is okay to everyone. We committed to spend $2,000, we spent that $2,000. The law firm that is representing the cities is Ice Miller out of Columbus, they're requesting an additional $1,500 from the City of Bel Brook. I provided the documentation that shows all the, all the different communities that are part of this. We're on the lower end because of our size. As much as I don't want to spend the money, I think it's well worth it if we allowed that to happen in this downtown area. I think you could really, really damage the appearance of the downtown by, by doing that. And it really, it takes the control out of the local hands, which is really what the bigger issue is here, that you, it doesn't, doesn't matter that they, we all know that that's the next technology, and they need to be someplace, but if they can put them wherever they want, it really doesn't allow us to say they can't have one right out in front of this building if it's in the public right away. So I think it's money well spent, but I wanted to make sure that council was agreeable to that before I.
Is this a one-time thing, or are they going to come back in another six months and ask for more? Eric Trions?
Hopefully, the intent is, we paid them $2,000, that got us through the court case and that, now they're in the process of rewriting this bill and that, and if we get to that and everyone can agree, then the court case hopefully just goes away. And we don't need to pursue that, because the, unfortunately, the other side of this is not just the telecommunication provider, the reality is it's the state of Ohio. It's the Attorney General is representing the other side, because it's a state law that was passed by the legislature. So now we're fighting them, and so hopefully, we can quit fighting, and if they just have a bill that is acceptable to everyone, then we can do it. But I would hope that this is a, just one more addition, but I can't say that for certain.
Seems like we've spent close to $350,000 so far, if you count the second round coming in, so that's a lot of money to be thrown at this thing, and I hope we're getting a good bang for our buck. I don't disagree that it's worthwhile, but it just seems like it's litigation, and they've got a all-you-can-eat type buffet, and they're just asking for more money, and more money, and more money. I think $350,000 should be enough to get this thing through wherever it's going to go to.
Right, yeah, at what point does it end?
Yeah, exactly.
Is the, if it continues on, and the court case continues on, then at what point?
It looks like they've already collected close to $180,000, and now they're asking for another $170,000, so.
Right.
I would hope it ends, but I think we'd have to go through with it, and, you know, hopefully, or at least fortunately, our share is not, not very large, so.
Any other, Nick, questions?
I think it's money well spent.
Forrest?
All right, finally, I just wanted to address, obviously, everyone in council knows that our levy failed last Tuesday night by a mere 35 votes, which is disappointing to say the least. But I just wanted to make sure everyone in the audience knew that now council and with information that I provide them will relook at this and make some decisions going forward. It's not something that is just as simple as, yes, we're going to put another levy on the ballot, or no, there's, there's some things that we, that council needs to take into consideration, and make some decisions, and sort of take a step back and look at this. So we've gone through two-thirds of the budget process. In two weeks, we'll finish with our five-year projection, and I think at that point, it may become a little clearer as to what the future will bring. But at the current time, there's nothing that's imminent, we're not going to turn the traffic lights off tomorrow or anything like that. But, but this was money that I thought we demonstrated what the need was for, and what we needed it for long-term. Obviously, the voters have spoken, and we'll, we'll take that into consideration and make the changes necessary to keep things operating. That's all I have this evening.
Any questions for our city manager? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and move on to committee reports. Service?
No official report tonight, but just wanted to remind everybody not to rake your leaves into the street, it will clog up the sewer system. Please hold them or haven't picked up.
Safety?
Nothing, mayor, other than make sure your smoke detectors and alarms are in working order, it's the time of year. Time has changed, it shouldn't matter to you, so we can all be safe. That's all I have.
I would also add, it's not a bad idea to have a carbon monoxide detector this time of year, if they're starting their furnaces up. Make sure that you get a furnace guide if it hasn't been looked at in a while, because you definitely don't want to have an issue with the clogged glue or cracked heat exchanger, that could be an issue.
That's one of the things that building inspection's done, if you pull a permit, one of the things, if you don't have wired carbon monoxide detectors, they add that to you, which is a good thing.
Finance and audit?
Nothing more to report tonight, mayor, just a little disappointed that we didn't pass the levy, but we'll go back and relook at the numbers and see how we can adjust going forward.
Community affairs?
Nothing new.
Old business?
Oh. Okay.
Open, okay.
Open discussion.
Old business, new business, open discussion.
Just like to congratulate our tenured employees of the City of Bel Brook. Like the mayor said, it's nice to not have a lot of turnover, when you have 25 years, 10 years, 15 years, that's a long time, and we appreciate their service.
Forrest?
I'd just like to thank the voters for turning out and voting, although it didn't work out, but I'd still like to thank the voters for being part of the process. That's all I have, mayor.
Just two quick things, like Forrest, Greenwood here, I'd like to thank the registered voters who voted in general election, whether you voted for the candidates or against the issues themselves, you exercised an important right, and that was the right to vote, and that's, that's what's important. Publicly, though, I'd like to thank Mr. Ralph Harper. He was a resident of Bel Brook, volunteered to serve as treasurer of the city's campaign for the levy. And too often times, you know, we don't give those volunteers to step forward to do something the accolades and recognition, but he did spend some considerable time documenting the issues at hand with the finances, everything, and the paperwork that they were properly accounted for, so, thank you.
Nothing more to add. The voters have expressed their disappointment that the issues weren't fully understood. I wanted to take a moment to congratulate, I went out to the fall sports banquet at the high school and the middle school, and I probably am missing somebody, but at least jotted down who I could remember. So I wanted to say congratulations to the girls varsity volleyball, they won their league for the fourth straight year in a row. The eighth-grade football players completed their second undefeated season.
Wow.
Undefeated. The fifth-grade football team won their Super Bowl, and I think that was their third straight year in a row, if I remember right. Also, the eighth-grade volleyball were the division champs in their league, and the seventh-grade volleyball girls were the runner-up in their division. Congratulations to everybody.
Anything else?
Mayor, nothing to report this evening.
And I have nothing. This is where it is opened up to the audience. Is anyone in the audience like, you're going to get picked on anyway, so you might as well get it over with.
I have something interesting to say.
Okay.
You have to say who you are.
So you need to say your name, you have five minutes, and you need to say your address.
My name is Joey Derico, 1822 Sugar Run Trail.
My name is Drew Ward, 4184 Sugar Creek Drive.
Good evening, council.
accounted for, so thank you.
Nothing more to add. The voters have expressed their disappointment that the issues weren't fully understood.
I wanted to take a moment to congratulate, I went out to the fall sports banquet at the high school and middle school. And I probably am missing somebody, but at least jotted down who I could remember. So, I wanted to say congratulations to the girls varsity volleyball. They won their league for the fourth straight year in a row. The eighth-grade football players completed their second undefeated season. Undefeated. The fifth-grade football team won their Super Bowl, and I think that was their third straight year in a row, if I remember right. Also, the eighth-grade volleyball were the division champs in their league. And the seventh-grade volleyball girls were the runner-up in their division. Congratulations to everybody.
Anything else?
Mayor, nothing to report this evening.
And I have nothing. This is where it is opened up to the audience. Does anyone in the audience like, you're going to get picked on anyway, so you might as well get it over with.
I have something interesting to say.
Okay.
You have to say who you are.
So, you need to say your name. You've got five minutes, and you need to say your address.
My name is Joey Derico, 1822 Sugar Run Trail.
My name is Drew Ward, 4184 Sugar Creek Drive.
Good evening, council. My name is Joey Derico, and tonight I am joined by my friend Drew Ward. Over the past couple of months, my friends and I have been exploring a topic aimed at creating an impact that will benefit all of Belbrook's residents. Through consultation with family, peers, and a city official, we have decided to embark on a journey to attempt to lower the voting age here in Belbrook to 16 years of age. Let me be clear, lowering the voting age is by no means a partisan issue. Our end goal in this process is to simply inspire younger citizens in an effort to increase voter turnout, to ultimately bring about a more informed and engaged electorate for local issues.
Research and practicality suggests that the voting age should be in de-bow. First, a test ran by Philip Zazzol, professor at the University of Minnesota, determined that by age 16, cold cognitive skills, which are skills associated with decision-making, with logic and reason, are fully near-developed. Secondly, a misconception exists that lowering the voting age constitutes a slippery slope. However, the age of 16 holds special value in our culture. We have to pay taxes. We work wages, like hourly jobs, with no constrictions, and we are able to drive. Lastly, lowering the voting age will improve voter turnout community. There's a trickle-up effect on civic participation, so when teenagers engage, their parents are more likely to as well. Voting as a habit and started the process when teens are being exposed to civics in school will produce an engaged electorate here in Belbrook that transcends across multiple age groups.
Therefore, we stand before you tonight with a request. Our request to hear us out through the process of formulating an ordinance to amend the city charter. The next time we appear, we will possess an ordinance containing the official language precisely what we are attempting to amend in the charter. This is a new experience for us, and mistakes will be made. But hopefully, with your guidance and feedback, we will be able to produce a meaningful change here in Belbrook. Thank you for your time this evening, and we welcome the opportunity to work with you moving forward.
Any questions? A process first.
And I've talked to Mr. Derico on several occasions about this. So, there is another city, I can't recall who it was, in Ohio that it, what was it?
Granville attempted to do it.
Granville worked on it. So, just did a little research, and you could amend the voting age for city-related issues. So, that's, it's not going to amend it. They couldn't vote on a county issue, a state issue, or that. But we can amend it to allow, within our charter, to allow a 16-year-old or older to vote on city-related issues. I haven't done all the legal research or anything like that, but the proposal that was in Granville that they talked about, that's what they did. And to do that, it would take an amendment to the charter. The charter is what dictates who can vote on issues within the city. So, I've sort of given them a rough timeline or a timeframe of what steps would need to be. And to get something on the ballot for a charter change, it takes an ordinance of council that'd have to be approved. And once it's approved, then it can be placed on the ballot at an election to be changed. So, that's where they've sort of worked to the point that I suggested the next thing that they needed to do was come and speak to council about what their desire was and get your feedback on it.
So, can you change the charter without having a charter review committee?
You can change it without a charter review committee, yes. It has to be, the council can change the charter, can pass an ordinance to amend the charter in any way at any time, but it still has to go to a vote of the people. And they can't change the charter, but they can authorize the legislation that would go before the voters to amend the charter.
Correct.
Would they have to register at the county level, though, to be verified at the polling place?
Well, that would, that would be, there's probably more research.
There is on that. I don't know how that would work from the board of elections standpoint. I haven't gone that route yet.
Did it pass in Granville? Is that where you?
There's currently two cities where it has passed, Topeka Park, Maryland, and also Highsville, Maryland. They both passed legislation lowering.
But I don't believe in the state of Ohio there is one that has passed. Granville, to our knowledge, I don't know if it's where it stands in the process. I know it was introduced, but, you know, so I would probably initially maybe reach out to their law director and see what research they've done. But, yeah.
Well, I will say, in my four years on council, this is probably one of the more interesting requests that we've had.
Yes, absolutely. And I'd absolutely commend you for following it through to this point and being so thorough in your presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I can't say that I would support it, but I think if you bring something back, then, you know, we can obviously talk about it. And I also like the initiative of going out and researching it and, you know, having it. How old are you guys, 16?
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense. But, you know, to have, you know, the civics background, just to understand how it works is a good learning experience. I would have no idea what the general public would think, because ultimately, it's not going to be us. Now, of course, we can decide not to put it on the ballot unless you would do a petition.
You can do an initiative.
Could they hold elected office?
Huh?
Could they hold elected office, or just vote for it?
I don't believe, currently based on the charter, but that is potentially something else that could be changed. I would have to go back and look at what the requirements are, but I believe it says it's 18 years of age. His requirement to hold office.
So, that'd be a whole other ordinance then.
And that because of contracts and so forth and so on?
I, yeah, I don't know.
Could be. I don't know.
I don't know. The problem is, you're, you know, ultimately, because you're not emancipated, that you put your parents on the hook for a lot of stuff, so.
And actually, just to give you, and I'm not for or against it, just to give you some feedback, but as far as the taxes that you pay, you're not paying for property taxes, which is what funds the city. So, you're probably not, right, unless your parents are paying.
They would pay, they would pay, they would pay, they would pay income tax, and then also potentially, even with their income tax, they definitely would pay the city income tax, not just federal income tax, the city income tax. I don't know if they would get it back. I can't remember that.
Most of them, most cities that have an income tax, if you're under 18, you can get a refund.
Get a refund.
Not all, but most of them, yes.
But renters don't pay direct property tax either, and they still vote, so.
Yeah, that's true. Well, it's a good initiative. I don't know that I would agree with it or not, but I think work with Mark, and he'll tell you how to move forward, and it'd be a good civics lesson to see, and it'd be up to you guys to sell it.
Yeah, that's our intention.
I think this group would be the first ones you'd have to sell without doing a ballot initiative.
But getting more people involved in government is a good thing.
Yeah. So, even though I didn't have to force you up here, I'm still giving you pins for getting up here. So...
Thanks. Thank you.
You guys have any other, since we asked questions, you get a little more than five minutes.
All right, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, like, when you guys vote to put it on a ballot, on the ballot or not, is it more your opinion, or is it, is this a question we think the voters should have a decision on?
So, first off, council would decide, and Mark can correct me where I'm wrong, but we would decide if something goes on the ballot. You could also decide if you get the mandated signatures necessary to put something on the ballot. But I don't know about a charter. I don't know if we have to vote to put it on or not.
But I think his question is more, when you're voting, whether or not to put it on the ballot, are you voting as your personal opinion, or are you voting as a representative of the residents of Belbrook? Is that really more what you're asking?
Oh, well, I think in any of those decisions, vote. I mean, you got elected based upon your opinions. So, you sort of need to follow those opinions, but there is no clear, you know, it's also, you know, occasionally, you can think you're right, but the majority don't. So, but that's why you have elections, to pick the people to represent you.
And also, in our rules, we talk to a lot of friends and family and neighbors and others, and so we get influenced by what they also say. So, they might say, oh, we hope that you vote for that, or you vote against it, and that's sort of what we're elected to do, is to represent the public.
And it would have to have, it'd start here with public hearing, so it wouldn't just be us. So, it would have to be a public hearing first to even consider it. And then after the public hearing, then city council votes. But the process would be introduction of ordinance, right? Then it would be public hearing of ordinance, which we did too tonight. And at that point, after the public gets up, goes through the processes, we can decide on a number of things. One, no, table it, or approve.
That answers my question.
Yep.
That's all we have.
Okay, well, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Very good.
Okay, anyone else in the audience this evening? Uh-oh, I see Louis. He's already been up there once this evening.
Yeah, I know.
How many years again, Louis?
15.
15.
I'm Louis Schatzberg. I live at 482 Ridgeline Drive, and I'm also an employee of the city for the camera. I wanted to thank city council and the city manager for allowing me to have this position to be able to do this. I have learned a whole lot about the city of Belbrook and about how the city's run and how decisions are made and why things are the way they are. I've also had the honor of being on the planning board, I think, almost 10 years now. And that was very interesting as well, the cases that we've had to come up against us. I mean, I look back at what we did on the planning board when the vineyard went in, went in in two phases. When we, when phase one got done, then they came back to do phase two. Ryan Holmes, you know, in the process, the people that had it originally fell on hard times, and I believe Ryan Holmes ended up picking it up and doing phase two. But the unique thing I thought about in phase two was, the people that were at the hearing to make phase two up there was the people living up there, the people that have bought up there, the people that were building up there. Any connection they had up there came to the meeting on phase two.